We will now begin the November 6, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission pre-meeting. Do we have someone here to present the agenda?
Good evening, everyone. All right, starting off with old business, items 1, 2, and 3. The applicant is requesting that these items be withdrawn. They have submitted a new plan for this property, and that will be on next month's agenda, the December Planning and Zoning Agenda. So those items will be withdrawn. That takes us to new business, item 1A. This is for Duckett Creek Sanitary District. They're proposing a small building addition to their existing lift station at Sports Park Drive and Highway K. It'll just contain electrical equipment and be entirely within that existing compound out there. Staff is recommending approval of the request with no conditions. So here's the site plan. This small part here is the addition. And here's kind of a look at it as well. And it's just this portion of the building here. Any questions on that?
It doesn't appear, so let's go on to the next item.
All right. We have several items of new business that are going to be tabled. Items 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D. Staff is requesting that these items be tabled until next month's meeting. We've requested more information from them. Next, new business items 3A and 3B. The applicant has requested that those items be tabled until December. And then, new business items 4A and 4B. The applicant has requested that those be tabled until December as well. So that takes us to new business items 5A, 5B, and 5C. This is a request for a conditional use permit and a site plan for an independent living senior community at property on the south side of Mexico Road between Bryan Road and Governor's Court Run. The applicant is proposing a 56, 56 two-bedroom units across three floors in this building. And they're proposing this to be a mixed-income senior community, so 50 of the units are reserved for lower-income seniors. And I'm sure the applicant can explain that a little more than I can. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the senior overlay district with our standard conditions. And then, we are also recommending approval of the site plan with a couple of conditions to provide a photometric lighting plan, provide approvals from all the reviewing entities, and then a couple others as well. Here's the site plan. We've got the building in front of the parking, so you'll see the building from the road and not the parking behind. And then, they've got an entrance kind of on both sides, access from Governor's Run Court, and then from the access drive through the Walgreens property. And here are the elevations of the building. I'll take any questions on that.
Anyone have any questions? Yes, Commissioner.
Spencer, can you help me on? So with these projects for senior living, are these established by the state or by City of O'Fallon as far as when we talk about the AMI percentages and the number of units that can be dedicated for market rate?
Yeah, I believe when they go for funding from the state, they have requirements they have to meet. I guess I don't have too many details on that. And when, you know, certain things kick in, I'm sure the applicant could answer some of those questions. They've provided some of that data, but I'm sure they'll know it a little better than me.
I had a question. What's the breakdown on the occupants that they're proposing? Do you have any idea on that? Like, how much of it's going to be independent, independent living versus assisted?
Yeah, I think all of it. All 56 units are going to be independent.
All right, let's go on to the next item.
Next, new business item 6A. This is a request for a site plan for a parking lot addition for Mastercard. They're proposing a new parking lot pretty much behind all the buildings with 268 parking spaces. Of those spaces, 54 of them are compact spaces, and that is the 20% that the code allows this parking lot. They designated it as a future location for the solar canopies. If they decide to do that, they would need to come back with another site plan in the future, but they're not doing that at this time. So staff is recommending approval of the site plan. Here's the plan here, and then this back here is the solar field that was approved adjacent to it as well, so kind of give you an idea where that's located.
A lot of trees are being removed for this parking lot. Are they still in compliance with their tree requirement for the entire site?
Yeah, they are. I should have put the landscape plan in here. They're planting a lot of trees kind of around the perimeter here so that they don't have to take any trees out in the future if they come back for the solar canopies. So there's not as many, you know, kind of in here at these islands and spread out throughout the parking. So they do have the required trees that would, as part of the mitigation.
All right, let's go on. Let's go on to the next item.
Okay. New business item 7A. This is a request for a site plan for exterior and parking lot modifications for Sabers at 2601 Highway K. This is currently the Dogwood Social House in the liquor store. They are vacating that space, and the Dogwood Social House at least is moving to the sports park development on Bryan Road once that gets going. So Sabers is coming in. They're a donation center and retail store. They're proposing to remove some parking spaces at the front of the building for a donation drop-off lane and then adding a trash compactor and loading dock at the side of the building. Staff is recommending approval. We do have quite a few conditions that we want to put on there. Provide the buffer yard calculations. Additional landscaping may be required, making repairs to the parking lot. Donation bins or similar will not be allowed to be located outdoors at any times. All products received must be immediately brought indoors. Products may not be stored or displayed outdoors. Semi-trucks or trailers will not be permitted on the property other than the loading dock area, and no idling of trucks due to adjacent residential homes. So we had a few, those are a few of the conditions that we don't normally see a lot, so we want to put those on there, and then we have a couple others as well. Here's the site plan. This is the drop-off lane and then the loading dock, trash compactor area. Here's kind of a closer look at it. And then, here are the elevations for the building. You can see they've got the green kind of drop-off lane, and then this is the loading dock and the trash compactor. Any questions on that?
Yes, Commissioner.
Is there, I'd like the no idling of trucks, but what would be the difference between that truck idling and a food or beer truck idling to the restaurants adjacent to this property?
That's a good, that's a good question. I think having it on this one, it's better than, you know, not, because if there's trucks back there anyways for, you know, the beer trucks or food trucks, like you said, if they're idling, there's not really much we can do about it at this point since they're already existing use. But now that this one's coming through and has the possibility of something like that, I think, you know, putting it on there so we can prevent it from being any worse.
But would we put that restriction on a restaurant that's being put right beside a subdivision? That's my concern is we're putting a restriction on here, but restaurants wouldn't have the same restriction because they're, I like it, but I just, I'm nervous.
Well, I mean, usually with, you know, restaurants, it's just, it gets delivered, and then the truck takes off here. They have said that they will have trucks, and they'll put some of this merchandise on the truck. So I don't know if that, we don't know if that truck's going to be sitting there for a couple hours while they load it up, or if, you know, it's going to take a couple days to fill it up and they have it idling for, you know, several hours or something like that.
Okay.
That was the thought process behind that.
All right. Commissioner Seymour, did you have something you wanted to say about that?
No, I was just explaining that we have done that before. We've also restricted delivery times. Tried the trailers, we did that to Snook's Grocery Store, several other places. It's not unusual to do that.
Yeah, we've gotten calls complaining about other locations as well with idling trucks.
Right.
You know, I think it's reasonable.
All right, is there any other questions or comments? All right, let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Item 8A. This is a site plan for a private commercial drive between Del Riata Boulevard and Caledonia Drive. They're proposing this private drive to allow access for the adjacent commercial properties. One of them, we just saw last month with the Bank of Old Monroe. We've got a couple of the other lots that are on the agenda tonight that would be served by this access road. Staff is recommending approval with one of the following conditions. The city will work with the developer in order to have the existing stubbed-out access on the Caledonia Parkway be relocated to the south so that it aligns with the existing access into the mobile gas station. So I have a image of what that looks like now. So essentially, what we're, whoop, what we're wanting to avoid, this is going the wrong way, sorry. We're wanting to avoid this curve in the road and then this kind of conflicting point here. Cars coming in to turn left into here would essentially block this access road. So we're going to cooperate with the developer to fix that. So yeah, so that's what this looks like. Any questions on that?
So who, did the developer bring that in, or is the city doing this?
Sorry?
Is this brought in by the city, or is this?
This is brought in by the, like, the owners of this property and some of the Caledonia commercial area. We did look into the history of this being put in, and it looks like, I guess Todd, I don't know if you have answers on that of when it went in, but...
Yeah, it had to do, the reason they're misaligned right now, it had to do with a lot with the timing of when the plans were approved and when each side of the intersection was built. That was, and part of it also was the section on this side of the road was built when MoDOT did the improvements to the DD intersection up there, too. So it's a kind of a convoluted history on it, but a lot of it has to do with the timing of why they're not lined up right now.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, we just want to get it lined up and have it done properly, so.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll go on to the next item then.
Okay. All right. 9A, 9B, and 9C. This is a conditional use permit and site plan for Dobbs Tire and Auto at 708 Caledonia Drive. This is one of the lots that would be using that access drive. They're proposing Dobbs Tire and Auto. The building is 8,969 square feet with five garage bays. And like I said, the access to the site will be from the private drive aisle to the south and then that shared access to the north with the right-in only off of Highway DD. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for automobile repair services with our standard conditions on automotive uses regarding the storage of vehicles and parts, prohibiting outdoor repairs, things like that. We're also recommending approval of the site plan with some of these following conditions. Individual screening units are not permitted on the roof, so they need to provide a parapet around the perimeter of the building for the mechanical screening or, you know, relocate them to the ground with proper screening that way. And provide a four-foot wide sidewalk along the Highway DD frontage in lieu of the 10-foot wide trail shown on the site plan. That goes back to last week, or last month, excuse me, with Bank of Old Monroe, talking about that trail up front. So instead of a 10-foot trail, we've, you know, agreed to do a four-foot wide sidewalk instead of the trail. So here is the site plan. Like I said, we're going to try and get this straightened out, so this might look a little different here. And then, here are the elevations of the building, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
Members of the commissions, anyone have a question? All right, let's go on to the next item.
Okay. All right. 10A, 10B, and 10C. This is on the opposite side of that, there's two lots there. Conditional use permit and site plan for Scooters Coffee at 130 Del Riata Boulevard. The proposed building is 664 square feet, and then they have 225-square-foot outdoor patio area. Again, access to the site will be from the private drive aisle to the south and the shared access to the north coming off of DD. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for a drive-through with our standard conditions, and we're recommending approval of the site plan, excuse me, with some of the following conditions. Provide full-color building elevations, clear enough to read and call out the materials being used. Provide a sidewalk connection to the building from the access drive sidewalk and the four-foot sidewalk along Highway DD instead of the 10-foot trail. So here's that plan, like I said, it's just kind of on the other side of that chunk of property there. And kind of a standard look for the other scooters we've got around as well. So any questions on that?
Yes, Commissioner.
Just to clarify, this is in addition to the scooters that was approved to go in front of Shady Creek in the Willows, or is the tenant chosen to relocate?
This is, as far as we know, it's in addition, so.
Yes, coffee must be good, all right.
Yeah.
I had a question, comment on that drawing you had back up there. Is that the exit, that road where they come out and they'd come back on to that other street? Is that a subdivision across the street?
Down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that goes back into Phase 1 of Caledonia.
Okay. So if you're making a turn out of there, can you see unobstructed around that oval driveway with scooters? Or is it, that looks pretty tight to me. It was just something that stood out. It looks like it could be somewhat...
Like for site distance coming through here? Yeah, there should be. Usually, a car would stop about here, I'd say, and then looking out that way. So I think it should be okay. That didn't come up as an issue to us when we were reviewing it. So that's something we'll look at closer in construction plans. We'll have them show the site distance triangles at all of the intersections and things like that. So that'll be looked at as well, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Item 11A. This is a site plan for Arrive Apartments on Home Field Boulevard and TR Hughes. The site plan has been through the planning and zoning several times, but most recently in August 2024. That plan expired, and with that, they're required to come back for reapproval. This is the same plan that was approved in August of 2024. 162 units, seven buildings. Wheel stops have been added. That's part of the code that we're making sure we have now. And then, we've requested a couple additional sidewalk connections. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan with some of the following conditions. Wheel stops, like I said, and then connecting sidewalk in a couple spots. I can point those out if you'd like to see where they are. But here is the site plan. Seven buildings and the clubhouse there in the middle. It's the elevations of the buildings, and then these are the clubhouse floor plan and elevations. So any questions on this one? Should be pretty familiar.
Well, to some.
To some, yeah.
Commissioner Seymour?
Thank you. Do you happen to know what the vacancy rate is of apartments in this area? Because we've got like 5,000 apartment units going in. I mean, it's incredible. I guess somebody knows something we don't know.
Yeah, I don't have that number. From ones that we've heard from, just in general, you know, meeting, it seems like it's doing pretty well. I don't, I don't have the exact number, but...
Well, I know they're in Lake St. Louis, Darden Prairie, just everywhere they're building apartments, all the way out to Warrenton.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering what that vacancy rate was. You know, we went to a series where we had about 25 car washes going down Highway K.
Yeah. We fixed that, by the way.
So, you know, I don't want to see any more apartments. I think we're good to go on apartments.
Mayor?
What's it, what's this zoned?
This is zoned R4.
Okay.
Which is our apartment building district.
Of course, I agree with you, but the problem, the problem is it's zoned R4, and if they meet all of our court codes and ordinances, there's not a whole lot we can do about it.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from. There's a lot of folks that are saying that, but it's, we haven't approved apartments in O'Fallon in a long time.
Well, we're bleeding them now.
It has been a little while since we've had a permit come through.
This project was, been approved by us, I think, three times.
This'll be the fourth time it's been here.
Four times, okay. Hopefully, this will be the one it takes.
All right, let's go on to the next item.
That's the last item we've got on the agenda.
All right, well, we'll recess until 7 o'clock when we start the regular meeting. Also, I just want anybody in the audience to know that wants to speak, for any of the public comments, you need to fill out a comment card and put your name and information on here. We will now begin the November 6, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Tracy, can you do the roll call?
Chairperson Carolyn Thomas.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Nunnery.
Present.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilman Coskella.
Present.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Seymour.
Present.
Commissioner Nagar.
Present.
Commissioner Boust.
Present.
Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Link.
Present.
Commissioner Agameyer.
Present.
Commissioner Holting.
Present.
Commissioner Hawbaker.
Present.
Mayor, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the commission, you have in front of you this evening the agenda for the November 6, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Nunnery.
Second, Howard.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the November 6, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Uh-oh. Voting is closed.
All right, the agenda for the November 6, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting have been approved. At this point during the meeting, we open it up to citizens' comments for people to talk about items that are on the agenda that do not have a public comment or public hearing. We have one person who's completed one of those cards, and that's Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, members of the commission. My name is Ernie C. A.C. Deanoff, City Public Advocate. First thing I want to talk about is violation of Chapter 89 of the revised state statutes governing planning and zoning commissions. On the agenda, it should be E, approval of meeting minutes, and there's no meeting minutes. As a matter of fact, on the city's website, you can't even access the meeting minutes for the public. And so I have some severe problems with Chapter 610, the Open Meetings Act, and also Chapter 89, the Planning and Zoning Commission. I guess if the commission doesn't change it, we're going to end up in court and spending tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars in litigation fees. The next issue is Duckett Creek Sanitary District is before you, and in my opinion, you know, they're our partner, and they're our partner in building a great community. They do an outstanding job. I go to their Board of Trustees meetings, and they run a tip-top shape operation down there. They do not have to come before this Planning and Zoning Commission. They're doing you a solid favor. They're being a good neighbor, and I would ask that, according to the Missouri Constitution, they could just bypass the city, and it's an essential service. I would ask, since this is an essential service to provide to Duckett Creek customers, to waive all permit fees and all inspection fees because it's the same taxpayers with the city and with Duckett Creek Sanitary District. So that's something to consider. Mastercard Parking Expansion, 54 spaces. They're an ever-growing campus. They're a godsend to our community. They care about the environment, they care about our community, and they give Stock Loaded in Barrel a lot of money into our economy. I believe there are over 66,000 to 7,000 jobs now, and they have a lot of green space. So I'd ask that you approve that. Sabers on Missouri Highway K, zero sales taxes. They're a skeptical 401(c)(3) not-for-profit entity, and look up on the internet what they pay their executives and their cabinet members. You'll be astonished. Caledonia Commercial Neighborhood at Missouri Double D, private driver at Drive Access. I ask that ADA sidewalks be installed, no matter what MoDOT says, and on all sides of development and all sides of the bank and any further new development. Who's going to own, maintain, repair, replace, and snowplow this roadway? It's not in the staff report. Caledonia Neighborhood, again, Dobbs Auto and Tire. They need to follow all promulgated rules and regulations for hazardous materials, fluid, oils by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, and they'll be paying some sales tax to our city. TR Hughes and Home Field Boulevard, we need a moratorium on all new apartments. I ask that this commission have the gall and the gumption to turn down all new approvals...
Mr. Deanoff, your time is up.
...and it's an honest state Texas developer. Thank you.
Mr. Deanoff, please leave the podium right now. With that, we'll close the citizens' comments. We have three items that need to be removed from the table regarding Stonebridge Commons for the public hearing, request for zoning area plan and conditional use permit. Do we have a motion to remove these items from the table?
So moved, Nunnery.
Second, Howard.
All right, we have a motion to, and a second to remove these items from the table. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right, these items are now on the table, but the petitioner or the applicant has asked that these items be withdrawn, so they will... that these items be withdrawn, so there will be no further action on these items at this time. Under new business, the first item is the Duckett Creek Sanitary District Lift Station. We have a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for Duckett Creek Sanitary District Lift Station located at Highway K and Sports Park Drive. Duckett Creek Sanitary District is the property owner for a proposed pump station rehabilitation. Do we have someone to present this item on the agenda?
Thank you for the opportunity to present the proposed Duckett Creek Sanitary District Highway K Lift Station improvements site plan for consideration. My name is Scott Knight. I'm with Crawford, Murphy &amp; Tilly Engineers, and we're the engineers for the district on this project. Luke Keough, who is the Director of Engineering and Operations for the district, is also As was in the packet, there was some information in your packet. I did not bring a USB drive to plug anything in, but there was a description in there. The Duckett Creek Sanitary District is proposing a small addition to their existing lift station at the intersection of Highway K and Sports Park Drive. The addition will be 475 square feet and contain electrical equipment. That addition is entirely contained within the district's existing site and will be shorter than the existing structure. And there is some plans and a 3D rendering, a site plan and 3D rendering in your packets as well. A little bit of information about it, the existing Highway K station is masonry construction. It is visible from Highway K, measures about 40 feet by 40 feet by 16 feet tall. The proposed addition will also be masonry and will match the existing station. It'll measure about 16 by 30 by 14 feet tall, so it is in fact going to be shorter in length and in height than the existing station, but will be completely adjacent to it. The purpose of the project is to replace existing electrical gear at the station that has, it's approaching the end of its useful service life and needs to be replaced for continued service. Installing the new equipment in this new addition will improve safety and reliability associated with the pump station's electrical equipment, and it will also allow the existing station to continue operating while the new addition and the equipment is installed, minimizing downtime with the station. And this is a significant station for the district. The timeframe of the project is anticipated as next year, both beginning and concluding during 2026. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Members of the commission, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? All right. If.
Motion to approve for staff recommendations, Hennessy.
Second, Nunnery.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for the Duckett Creek Sanitary District Lift Station for a pump station rehabilitation. Members of the commission, cast your votes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next four items on the agenda, the staff has asked for the items that's at 1414 Bryan Road be tabled until the December 4th, 2025 meeting. So at this time, do we have a motion to table these four items?
So moved, Hennessy.
Second, Coskella.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table the items at 1414 Bryan Road until the December 4th, 2025 meeting. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right, these items will be tabled until December 4th, 2025. And the next two items, the applicant has requested that these items at 845 Fizey Road be tabled until the December 4th, 2025 meeting. So members of the commission, do we have a motion to table the items at 845 Fizey Road for the item, or for the enclave at Brucalo?
So moved.
Second, Coskella.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table the items at 845 Fizey Road. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right, the item at 845 Fizey Road, the enclave at Brucalo, will be tabled until December 4th, 2025. The applicant has requested that the next two items also be tabled at West Terra Lane, east of Lake St. Louis, until the December 4th, 2025 meeting. Members of the commission, do we have a motion to table the next two items until the next meeting?
So moved, Howard.
Table, Lee. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table the items at West Terra Lane, east of Lake St. Louis, until the December 4th, 2025 meeting. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right, these items are tabled until December 4th, 2025. The next item we have on the agenda this evening is a, is a public comment and a, for a conditional use permit for the village at Hillman Farm on Bryan Road. This is a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for the village at Hillman Farm located on Bryan Road for a senior living community, and a request for consideration and motion for action on the site plan for the village at Hillman Farm on Bryan Road for the senior living community. Do we have someone here to present this item?
My name is Cliff Heitman with Bax Engineering Company. On behalf of Baldridge, Mexico LLC, they are the property owners on this piece of property. As you mentioned, a conditional use permit and a site plan for the village at Hillman Farm. Also with me this evening is Mr. Dan Bernard with Phoenix Real Estate Services. He is the contract purchaser and will be the developer as we, as he moves forward. Also have Mr. Chuck Reitzel. He is the architect on the project with Studio 785. So those gentlemen will be happy to step up if there are questions that they can answer that at the appropriate time. Running through kind of the details of the project, it's a 3.69 acre tract of ground that is zone C2 general business. So the property is on Mexico Road, near Bryan Road, near the intersection of Bryan Road. As you can see, the Walgreens there, just to the west. To the south is the Hillman Place Development. To our north there is Mexico Road, and then to the east is the Governor's Run Court. As mentioned, this property is zone C2. We're asking for a conditional use permit to allow for the senior overlay to be applied that would then allow for the development of the senior housing project. We're proposing a 21,842 square foot building. It would be three stories in height, would front on Mexico Road, as shown there. Be proposed, it would contain 56 two-bedroom independent living units, again, for, as I mentioned, for senior living. For mixed income, 50 of the units are for reduced income. Six of them are, would be at market value. I know a question came up in the pre-meeting regarding that mix, Mr. Bernard, and he can answer those questions at the appropriate time. So generally 10% are, are proposed or offered at market value, so that's where the six of the 56 number came from at, at market rate. There's common entry for the building, as you can see, which would have some shared lobby space and some other shared amenities inside the building. The zoning in this overlay district would allow up to 88 units, we're proposing 56, so we are not pushing the limits of the maximum density on this lot. We are proposing 75 parking spaces. You can see they're toward the rear of the development. Access would be off of two existing curb cuts, one that is off of Governor Run Court, and then another that's a private drive connection that exists behind the Walgreens property currently. This development, as it's showing, you can see a fair amount of green space, actually 55% of the lot remains in green space that will be landscaped according to city code, and they have employed landscape architect Randy Martis, and he's prepared a landscape plan that was submitted as part of the packet as well. There'll be walking paths within the development connecting to additional sidewalks and paths along Governor's Court and Mexico Road. There's some exterior pavilions and gazebos as part of the project. Detention will be provided on-site in basins to meet the stormwater requirement of the city. The elevations, and again, as I mentioned, the architect is here if you have questions. The elevations would be a combination of brick and siding, exterior patios and balconies on the building on both sides, and then an asphalt shingle roof. I'd be happy to address questions at the appropriate time. I know this is a public hearing, so I'd be happy to step aside for others to, to speak if necessary.
Well, let's, let's let the commission ask any questions right now that they might have first. Members of the commission, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Heitman? All right, well, we'll do the public comment portion then.
Yes, ma'am.
We do have a couple of people who've, well, one person has completed a comment card regarding this item. Mr. Deanoff?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. I want to start out by saying I'm all for new senior housing opportunities, but Hillman Place has a rocky beginning over the last five years in our city. It sounds like there could be a possibly new investor and new developers hiding again under another formed LLC with the Missouri Secretariat of State for liability purposes. It's entitled this time Baldridge, Mexico Road LLC. Seniors here at the other phases with the Columbia, Missouri father and son who made millions off of the state need to be safe, secure, and make sure that the developers or the people managing the property are not taking advantage of our senior citizen residents. It took a city council member about a year to unravel all the taking advantage of it Hillman Place, that residents came to the mayor and to the city over and over and over and told them that they were being taken advantage of. Number one, for utilities, there's no meters there. They were charging utilities out the yin yang of senior citizens, taking advantage of some elderly people with one-bedroom apartments. It was ridiculous. And it's against Missouri state law to do that, by the way. There's a lot of tax credits involved here. There's a lot of housing tax credits involved here. There are low-interest construction loans. Boy, they're not getting that 6.5% that everybody else is paying out on the real market. They're getting low interest rates like the 1% to 2% rates through the Missouri Department of Finance and the Missouri Housing Authority. There needs to be some benchmarks with this new phase of Hillman Place, or in this case, villages at Hillman Farm. And there needs to be a better response from the management company and the owners to the tenants. There needs to be accountability and responsibility, because I could take you down there right now and I could find 50 residents that have a lot of maintenance issues and a lot of non-responses from the current Hillman owners and the current Hillman Management Company. And as I brought up, the building of utilities to residents, it's illegal. The public water district number two, and I believe Duckett Creek Sanitary District, went after the owners and developers, and they had to get a lot of attorneys involved, and they finally came to the conclusion that they're not charging the residents for un-metered utilities. For those reasons, I ask that we be very cautious, that we have enough benchmarks in place to guard our senior citizens with this new phase. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
All right, that will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Mr. Heitman, would you? Mayor?
Dan, you want to come up here for a second? Do you guys have anything to do with the Hillman Place?
No.
Behind you?
None.
It's going to be behind you. So you have, what the gentleman was talking about has nothing to do with you guys. You're not taking over Hillman Place. This is a separate entity.
That's correct. We selected this site because it was a good use for the neighborhood. It happened to be next to an existing facility, which we believe would lessen any kind of potential neighbor opposition, and we are completely unrelated with the seller, which is Baldridge. We're completely unrelated to JES, which is the developer of Hillman Place. We have nothing to do with them. We'd be completely separate and independent on our own.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, the folks out there that were listening to that doesn't think that, you know, this is phase two of Hillman Place.
No, it's absolutely not.
This is totally separate, so the gentleman wasn't really knowing what he was talking about.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? Anybody else?
Anyone else have any questions for the developer?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Seymour?
We're, we're just a recommending body. We're not a judicial body. Is that correct?
I would ask council to get clarification.
We have, we make no judicial, we're just a recommending body to the city council of City of O'Fallon.
Correct.
Right. Yes.
That's all we do, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Boust?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just had a question about the sidewalk connecting to the sidewalk on Mexico. It's on the furthest east side of the property. Is there a reason why we chose that over the west side of the property? I would just assume, maybe it's assumption on my part, but I would think a lot more people would be walking out going west on Mexico.
It's essentially a great issue that the site sits much higher above Walgreens. If you've been by the site and looked at that, there's some challenges with trying to get a sidewalk down, especially one that would be more of an accessible walk down that changing slope there. So we chose that area because it'd be a simpler connection and a much more, I guess, usable, if you will, plausible place to make that connecting point.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Howard?
The plan shows that there's a mail kiosk outside, and then there shows there's a mail room inside.
Yes, sir.
I'm confused.
Thank you for bringing that up. I forgot, I overlooked that in my presentation. We showed initially a mail kiosk on the outside. In talking with Mr. Bernard, his model has the mail room inside, so the residents don't have to deal with retrieving mail and packages from an outside mail kiosk. So we will be working with Mr. Bernard and the post office to, to have that mail room inside the building. There will not be an extra mail kiosk that we have shown. I overlooked that in my presentation. Thank you for pointing that out, sir.
I also had some concerns about the sidewalk now connecting on the west end. There's not going to be very many of them going to high school and down to the driving range, but, you know, they're going to all want to go to the, eat to the west, to Walgreens and the strip mall that has restaurants and beauty salons and, so, I mean, it's something that should really be looked at to see if in some way to get it in there.
Sure, we'd be happy to take a look at additional connecting point there to the, to the west, sir. That's not a problem.
Because we get older, we're lazier, so we want to go the short distance.
We just want you guys to get your steps in, so we're.
You know how we are.
Going to have you go, so.
Thank you, sir.
We will take a look at it, Mr. Howard, thank you, and see if we can make a connecting, another connection point there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else have any other questions for the applicant? If not, do we have a motion regarding the conditional use permit for this property?
Madam Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions.
Second, Boust.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding the conditional use permit for the village at Hillman Farm located on Bryan Road. Baldridge, Mexico Road LLC is the property owner for a senior living community. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right, motion carries. And this will be at next city council meeting?
November 20th.
Okay. Then do we have a motion regarding the site plan for this property?
Motion to approve for staff recommendations, Hennessy.
Second, Boust.
Second, Howard.
on Bryan Road, Baldridge, Mexico Road LLC is the property owner for the proposed use of a senior living community. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda this evening is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for 2200 Mastercard Boulevard. Mastercard Technologies is the property owner for our parking lot addition. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Good evening, everybody. Dan Kozatek with CEC, civil engineer, representing Mastercard. Happy to explain and present this project here this evening. The presentation here is brief. It's certain sheets that are already in your packet, but I just want to highlight a few things on the project that are key. This aerial gives you a basic location. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Mastercard facility, but that yellow shape, that's a funny-looking shape there on the northeast corner, that's our project. We call that Parking Lot F. The red line there would be the vehicular access way to get to that lot. This is just an enlargement of that same lot. You can see the trees, and to your point earlier, there are trees being removed. We can show you landscape plan in here of how we're satisfying current city landscape code, mitigating for the tree removal. There's our site plan. Biggest key there is the stormwater basin, satisfies city code there for detention and water quality purposes for this proposed lot. It's an extension off the existing parking lot system that brings a driveway in through here and allows a somewhat remote parking lot to the overall facility, which is primarily why certain elements aren't shown here that are on other lots, like EV chargers aren't shown here. They are in the rest of the parking field, but not here. Just very remote location, relatively speaking. This shows the circumnavigation of the fire truck and of a tractor-trailer to get in. We made sure we could get that to work and connect to all corners of the, of the parking lot. Landscape plan there, as noted earlier, the trees that are being installed to mitigate the tree removal are herded and shown around the perimeter. The main purpose there is there could be solar canopies put on this lot in the future, not in what you're seeing, of course, but what we wanted to do in the end islands here within the interior islands is put low-lying bushes and other landscaping, not trees. So they're around the perimeter. Lighting plan, standard stuff, satisfying city lighting code. The light standards themselves are solar-powered and LED fixtures and fencing that will match existing Lot E and rest of the perimeter, which is vinyl-coated, jingling fence, eight-foot tall. Happy to answer any questions, or if you have any specific owner questions that I can't answer, I do have a phone or friend in the audience from Mastercard.
Okay. Mayor?
Explain something, you just caught, you were explaining something about tractor-trailers going into this part?
Well, it's.
I don't know why you'd be.
It's the fire truck, the pumper truck is.
I understand with the pumper truck. I understand the fire truck, but for tractor-trailers, I don't, I didn't, I didn't understand that point.
Yeah, we use the pumper truck, my mistake, and.
Okay. So you're not going to be having tractor-trailers pull back?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because it didn't make sense to have tractor-trailers going back there.
Commissioner Howard?
I mean, you guys have got a whole lot of parking spots out here. I mean.
Sure.
Are people assigned to lots, or they just drive around for a half hour trying to find a spot, or?
Hopefully, not a half hour, but no, they're not assigned. One of the real reasons for this additional parking here is there's been an increase in number of visitor parking spots at the main entrance. EV chargers have been put in, things of that nature. In addition, there's some return to office occurring. There's been a lot of remote work at this facility, but post-COVID, a lot of more employees are coming back, so we need more parking.
Do they have shuttles to pick them up and take them into the building, or?
No shuttles, that I'm aware of, yeah. Yeah. The security is the key at this site, as you could likely imagine, so there is no exterior or rear doors. There's just the one main entrance.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Boust.
On your tree placement, if I'm understanding correctly, it's kind of budding up to the solar farm, correct?
Yes.
But here, you're showing you're putting trees right along the edge of where that solar farm, if you will, is being constructed.
Yeah, the site plan, I don't have the trees overlaid on a sheet that has the solar panels shown, but it's far enough distance away that it won't conflict.
Okay, I just.
With the proposed solar farm.
Gotcha. I like the fact that you're putting some back in there to close out some of that space, right? Because we just took out some trees to put that in, or approved that, and then now you're taking more trees out for those homeowners on the backside, so.
Right.
I'm nice, I'm glad to see you're putting some trees back in there to help buffer that.
All right. Any other questions or comments regarding this item on the agenda? If not, do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Motion to approve of staff recommendations, Nunnery.
Second, Howard.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 2200 Mastercard Boulevard for the proposed use of a parking lot addition. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next item we have on the agenda this evening is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for 2601 Highway K, Ellisville Marketplace LLC is the property owner. Savers is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of a retail development. Do we have someone here to present this item on the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Councilman. My name is Matt Thurling. I'm a senior manager of construction and development for Savers. Happy to be here in O'Fallon to answer any questions for you. I don't have anything additional to present. It's a pretty straightforward project from what's in the packet, but I'm happy to answer any questions. We're fully able to comply with staff recommendations.
Mayor?
Matt, do you guys collect sales tax?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What is Savers? Ever heard of it?
Yes, sir. So we went public a couple of years ago. We are a for-profit thrift retailer, so we partner with local nonprofits like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, American Red Cross, Veterans of America, and we pay them directly for goods that are donated at our stores, and then we sell them for a profit. So we sell household goods, similar to like TJ Maxx, Marshalls, that type of thing. So it's mostly soft goods like clothing, but there's also household items like, you know, dishes, plates, those sorts of things.
Any appliances or anything like that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And do you do, do you get any new items?
No, we don't sell anything new.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So you said you buy mostly from, but you have a donation drop-off?
Yes, ma'am. So the donations that come into the store don't come to us. They come to the nonprofit. We accept them on their behalf, and then we pay the nonprofit for everything that comes in. So when the goods come in, we have a scale right there. We weigh them, we record everything, and then the nonprofit gets paid directly based on that. So they don't get paid based on what we sell. They get paid on what we, what we receive.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Seymour?
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Tell of a compactor?
Yes, sir.
What, what would, I realize you use a compactor to compact. What kind of items do you compact, and do you separate any items out?
Yes, sir. We have a very comprehensive recycling program. So everything that goes into the compactor, there are the donations that come in that we can't sell or recycle. So we try and use everything and sell everything that we can, but there's a portion of that that we can't sell that is still good enough to be sold overseas, and we bail those up and send them overseas to wholesalers where they're recycled and reused. There's a smaller portion that is no good, and we have to use that in the compactor. So we use the compactor rather than a typical open-top dumpster because compactor, smaller footprint into the environment, less trips for trucks to bring them to, to the dump. So it's a better environmental choice using the compactor.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner?
So you're more or less a thrift store, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, like, in that area, like, how many thrift stores are currently in K?
I don't know the exact figure, but I know there's one in the area. Yeah.
There's a Savers in this area?
We, well, we have, we have several Savers in the St. Louis market, yes, but I believe there's a competitor in the area.
Oh, yeah.
For this one, yeah.
So you're, but you said you're a for-profit, so you're not a 501(c)(3).
Yes, ma'am.
You're not.
Correct. We are for-profit.
Mayor?
Matt, again, with, with, do you guys, with the tractor-trailers, you're not having somebody, a tractor-trailer pull in at 5:30 in the morning, sitting at your dock waiting to unload?
No, sir. Well, they'll drop and go. So they'll drop and go. It will be unloaded over.
During business hours?
Yes, sir.
So you won't have anything coming in at 5:30 or whatever in the morning, waiting for you guys to get there to unload?
That's correct.
So everything that comes in as truckload will be coming during business hours?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Howard?
In the front of your building, along Highway K, there were some trees in there that I presume were maybe taken down because of the power lines, but they didn't take out the stumps, and they're, the suckers keep growing out of the stumps. So that's something you can clean up and get those stumps taken out of there, and it looks like a brush pile rather than just a yard.
Sure. Yes, sir, we can do that. Staff, staff had some recommendations about adding landscaping if required, so we can certainly fold that into the landscaping plan.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions or comments for the applicant this evening? If not, do we have a motion regarding this site plan?
Madam Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions. Howard?
Second, Nunnery.
You don't think it's a, you don't need to add anything regarding the stumps because that's part of the landscaping plan?
At this time, I don't think so. Knows what needs to be done.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 2601 Highway K, Ellisville Marketplace LLC is the property owner. Savers is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of a retail development. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for the southwest corner of Caledonia Drive and Highway DD. THF 40 DD Development is the contract purchaser for a private commercial drive. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Yes, Elliot Reed with Cochran Engineering. Staff gave a rundown of the, the project earlier. We are okay with working with staff to realign the existing drive located on Caledonia, Caledonia Drive. That's an existing concrete entrance, so we're going to shift that down so it lines up with the mobile entrance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Members of the commission, anyone have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Howard?
Will you guys be adding the typical signage for a street? A speed limit, no parking, whatever, street name? Are you going to name this, or is it just more of an alleyway?
To be honest, we still need to work with staff on that. I do not know the answer whether it's going to be a named street or not. The addresses will be off Delarriada and will be off of Caledonia. So I don't know the answer whether that's going to be named or not.
Well, the street to the north, the dead ends there that you're trying to realign with, you could extend that name right on through, isn't that?
Yeah, whatever, whatever we need to do to, to meet code, we'll do that.
The other question was that, are there's going to be street lights provided on each end of it?
There's actually four. There's one on each end and two in the middle.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? If not, do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Motion to approve of staff recommendations, Nunnery.
Second, Cas Keller.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for the southwest corner of Caledonia Drive and Highway DD. THF 40 DD Development is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of a private commercial drive. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item we have on the agenda this evening is 708 Caledonia Drive, Dobbs Tire and Auto. We have a public comment for a conditional use permit for Dobbs Tire and Auto at 708 Caledonia Drive, and we have a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for Dobbs Tire and Auto at 708 Caledonia Drive for automobile and other motor vehicle repair services. And we have a request and consideration and motion for action on a site plan for Dobbs Tire and Auto at 708 Caledonia Drive. Sansone Group is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of an automobile and other motor vehicle repair services. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Good evening, Elliot Reed with Cochran Engineering.
I figured there's a reason you weren't moving.
Yep. And I got one more after this, so.
Okay.
We're efficient tonight. This is along the access drive that was just approved, along Caledonia Drive. I will make one correction. Staff said it's a five-bay. It's actually 10-bay, five on each side. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this one.
Members of the commission? Commissioner Howard?
Next to the dumpsters, there's a small building. Is that for storage of old tires till they're picked up?
Correct.
Has this got a roof on it, or is it open on top?
I believe it's open on top.
I'd like to add a condition that no materials can exceed the height of the wall. Thank you, sir.
So that would be on the site plan, then, adding that condition. Members of the commission, any other questions or comments? This is a public comment, so there are a few people that have completed comment cards. The first one, Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. Member, the members of the commission, my name is RNC AC Deenoff, city public advocate. I just want to go over a couple of issues. Number one, hopefully, this is not a community improvement district with another 1% sales tax. Our transportation development district, which are separate political subdivisions that the city council may have created, which is another 1% sales tax to residents. So if it is, I want the city to divulge and disclose if there's additional sales tax within this neighborhood in this application. I want to ensure that the M4 water quality control is being adhered to through the Missouri Department of Natural Resources in our city codified ordinances. The Missouri Department of Natural Resources has appropriate state laws, promulgated rules and regulations governing hazardous waste materials, storage of hazardous waste, tire mitigation that is required by state law with a certain tax when. tire mitigation that is required by state law with a certain tax when they're recycled and they have to be recycled in the proper way, not, Dobbs has a great ethics, but some other people want to dump them on the side of the road, not Dobbs. They have a good ethical business model. But also fluids, oils and other associated automotive materials. I want to ensure that full sidewalk connectivity is, it's been various sites in the Caledonia neighborhood. We want to give special passes or limit ADA requirements in sidewalk connectivity or sidewalks on some portions of the properties. And so I want to make sure that there's sidewalk connectivity all the way on all public streets with the Dobbs. I would imagine the Dobbs down in High Ridge, the owners, father and sons, would want to do what's right for community and make sure that our, our pedestrian residents are safe from vehicular traffic. Also tree plantings, we want to make sure that appropriate tree plantings and landscaping is done to ensure good quality and proper green spaces because they are, have some unfortunate chemicals and hazardous waste that's involved with automotive industry. And I want them to compensate and give back to the community. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
We also have Jennifer Dowling.
Can I pass out maps or no? I didn't know how this went.
To, to this?
Yeah, I made 10 copies, if y'all could just like share, I just thought y'all could follow along with like what I'm talking about.
Make sure you give one to Tracy over there.
Okay, thanks. I didn't know, I've never done anything like this.
Hi, my name is Jen Dowling and I'm a resident of the streets of Caledonia. And in 2022, my husband and my family, we moved from Mississippi for a job for my husband here in St. Louis. And we left with three kids, two dogs, two turtles and one cat. And we moved to a very hot housing market and homes were going fast and they were being sold at over asking price. I also have a special needs autistic child. And so therefore, looking at the public school services to help accommodate her were essential in looking at where we would live. We don't have no family here, I know no one. So obviously, we had a real estate agent who took us to a home, which was being sold by Lombardo Homes of Streets of Caledonia. I would like to note that my comments are going to be made about the Dobbs Tire Center and the next item up for discussion, which is also the Scooters Coffee Shop. And we met Kathleen Sanders, ma'am.
The next item on the agenda is a public comment, so you'll be asked to come up again.
Oh, okay, well, it's the same basic thing. So I save y'all time, you just hear me once, if that's easier for y'all. It, it, it's all the kind of same points. But Kathleen Sanders was the custom home sales representative, represented Lombardo Homes and the developer. And when we asked about the commercial space, I just want y'all to know what we, as the residents, were sold when we purchased these million dollar homes. We were told that the commercial space was going to be retail shops, medical office profession, neighborhood pubs, dry cleaners, they were going to be quaint, family-friendly businesses, foot traffic type businesses that would add value to our home. We were also told that the community would be similar to the streets of St. Charles, hence the name, the Streets of Caledonia. And of course, if you're not from here and somebody takes you to St. Charles and it's like Dickens' Christmas Carol and you fall in love with it and you think, oh, this is what they're going to make this neighborhood to be. So the model home we looked at was really overpriced for what the quality we got, but we needed a house. And so November 10th of 2022, I paid $1 million, the gasping $1,050 for this home. My property taxes in 2024 is $13,115 and I paid $2,131 in personal property tax. Today, our household, my one household pays almost $1,300 a month to live in the streets of Caledonia. So to ensure our children's future, I made the difficult decision to return to work after being a stay-at-home mom for 13 years, as our taxes in St. Louis are three times higher than what they were in Mississippi. And while I'm not asking blaming anybody's fault, I want people to know what these developers and real estate agents sold to not only myself, but numerous members of our, of our community. I have several issues with the Scooters Coffee Shop and the Dobbs Tire Center that's being proposed tonight and the fact that these types of businesses were not the types of businesses that were sold to us when we made these large financial purchases. Number one, the property values, the Streets of Caledonia is a high net worth neighborhood. If you paid a million dollars for a home, would you want to look at a tire center while you walked your dog? So the map I gave you, the, the dot, that's my house. Number one is where they're proposing to put a Scooters drive-through. And number two is where they want to put a Dobbs Tire Center. It's four houses up from my street. If I sit on my back porch, I'm going to look at these businesses. So while I can move, right, like I, I have the option to move. Unfortunately, the markets changed and trade rates have gone up. And just to give you an idea, a comparable comp in our neighborhood, one of our neighbor's house that sold on January 7th in 2022, sold for $1,191,000. It resold on December 19th in 2023 for $944,000. That is a $250,000 decrease in less than two years in this neighborhood. And so I am very concerned that the type of businesses being proposed tonight will negatively affect the value of my home. I can't afford to take a $200, $300, $200,000 loss on my home. So I'm asking, I don't want to look at a dumpster. I don't, I mean, the car places are going to have commercial grade dumpsters. I'm literally going to be walking my dog and looking out my back porch at this. Number two, my area of concern is the traffic on DD. They call it deadly DD for a reason. Last year, there was a school bus accident involving children from Crossroads Elementary School at the roundabout. That yellow dot that I've got circled on the map is the roundabout that is the entrance to and from our neighborhood. My autistic daughter was on the bus that wrecked at that roundabout, okay? There is not a day that I go by when I enter that roundabout. That roundabout was designed so bad, when you're coming up from Double D, you come up and it's almost like a blind spot to where you can't hit the brakes quick enough. And then as people are coming down Double D from Wing Haven, they're going down a hill and they don't slow down. And so people don't, no traffic laws around here. I mean, I'm sorry, people get their driver's license like out of Cracker Jack boxes or something, they can't, they can't drive. And so you enter the thing and it's like, you've got the right of way and you're like.
Jennifer?
Yes, ma'am.
Your time is up.
Okay, can I finish at the next one?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
You'll be asked to come up again.
Okay, sorry, I'll keep going.
Michael Guyer.
Madam Chairwoman, woman, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, members, thank you. How can I compete with that? I am also a resident of the Streets of Caledonia and what she said is absolutely true. And to this day, Payne, who's no longer with us, Fisher and Lombardo are still selling the shops at Caledonia. They're still selling, connecting to Oday Park, which we realize isn't even going to happen for a number of years. We were misled, that is not this commission's fault. I'm not asking you to undo that. I am asking you to realize that we as residents are very concerned about what is going in next to us. It's why we were against the previous recommendation for McDonald's. It's why we're against this recommendation for Dobbs Tire and Auto. There are three tire and auto centers within two and a half miles of this location, including another Dobbs. Why? There are three coffee shops, and I understand your concern about that, that I can speak to next time within this location of Scooters. These are unnecessary, they do not enrich our community and they do not solve problems. I won't take any more of your time, thank you.
All right, those are the only two comment cards we had, so we'll ask the petitioner to come forward again and address the concerns of the residents.
To be honest with you, I don't really have anything to say with the, the concerns of the residents. This is Zone C2 and we're conforming with C2. I completely understand their situation. If I was in their situation and I was, if they claimed lied to and that happened, I, I'd be standing here too. But we're offering a Dobbs in conformance with C2. That's all I can basically say.
Members of the commission, anyone have any comments or questions for the petitioner? Mayor?
David or Stephanie, one of you, this is C2 and they meet all the qualifications and stuffs for.
Both of them, yeah, it's definitely Zone C2. But both of the uses in particular do require conditional use permits, that's the process. Just because they do have uses that are not necessarily just a permitted use, you know, it wouldn't even, if it was a permitted use, it wouldn't even be before the commission as a, as an option. So it is, has this extra step of, you know, govern, you know, just to put conditions on it for operation, whatever we believe is necessary. But overall, it's, it's, it's a C2 use.
You mean conditional, conditional use for Dobbs? I understand for Scooters and, because that's got a drive-through. But what's the conditional use for Dobbs?
It's the auto repair. So, you know, we've had, that was put as a conditional use probably in the past due to just the possible noise with the operation, storage of equipment and materials outside. We're trying, it's a way to govern and restrict that.
So there's no storage outside of equipment or anything like that?
That's one of our.
Derelict vehicles and all that stuff?
Right.
Elliot, do you know what the hours of operations for Dobbs are?
It was in, I'm sorry, not at the time I had, no, it was in our application for the, for the CUP.
Ethan, do you remember what the hours are?
I knew. Eight to six is for their other locations.
Eight to six?
I knew you were going to ask me that question too when you were leaving.
Never mind, I got the answer, it's eight to six.
I, I will add that this is a Dobbs and everyone knows what they're getting with a Dobbs. This is not a, a fly-by-night, this is a very reputable company in St. Louis.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All right, members of the commission, do we have any other questions or comments? If not, the first item that we have to consider is. I think I did because I asked him to come forward, I did close a public comment. So, so the first item that we have is the recommendation to the city, city council regarding the conditional use permit. Do we have a motion regarding that item?
Motion to approve of staff recommendations, Nunnery.
Second, Charlie Nagre.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding the conditional use permit for Dobbs Tire and Auto at 708 Caledonia Drive. Sansone Group is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of automobile and other motor vehicle services. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right, motion carries. Now this item will be at the next city council meeting, correct? Or the November 20th?
November 20th, yes, ma'am.
Okay. The next item is regarding the site plan. Do we have a motion regarding the site plan for 708 Caledonia Drive?
Madam Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff condition with the additional condition that no material stored in the bins shall exceed the height of the wall.
Second, Nunnery.
All right, we have a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for Dobbs Tire and Auto at 708 Caledonia Drive. Sansone Group is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of automobile and other motor vehicle repair services with the additional requirement that no material exceeding the height of the walls be stored there. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is 130 Dalryada, is it, how do you say that?
Dalryada.
Dalryada, oh, drive, Boulevard, Scooters Coffee. This is a public comment for a conditional use permit for 130 Dalryada Boulevard and a regard, a motion regarding the site plan, so.
Third time's a charm.
Yes.
Elliot Reed with Cochrane Engineering. Scooters, again, along the drive that we talked about earlier, except now we're on the, the west side along Dalryada. I would happy to answer any questions you have.
Members of the commission, anyone have any questions or comments? If not, we will open the public hearing and allow the people that have completed comment cards to come forward again. The first one, Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you once again, members of the commission. My name is RNEC AC Deanoff, City Public Advocate. I just checked with a friend of mine who works for the Missouri Department of Revenue and they confirmed that the O'Fallon City Council has established the Caledonia Community Improvement District, which charges 1% additional sales taxes to pay for capital improvements, roadways, parking lots, drainage, lights and landscaping for a private developer making a profit off of our residents. Why don't they build their own infrastructure without taxing us additionally? I do not know how we're going to support all these coffee opportunities down the, the Bryan Road Business District from I-70 down to I-64 and down now on Double D. But if we can grow our sales tax revenue without a vacant building in the next two years, I'm all for the project. You know, the conditional use permit, but my only reservation or hesitation is, is what if this company doesn't make it because of all the other competition? And then we have a vacant coffee stand, coffee retail location that's going to sit there idle for years and years to come. So I'm for the conditional use permit if they can survive. And I think we have too much competition, as some of the other residents explained on the record. This coffee shop, in my opinion, is, is in unfair, is in an unfair playing field with the majority of our other shopping districts, restaurant districts and entertainment districts across our city, where our city charges the city sales tax rate of a combined state, county and city sales tax rate of 7.8% and the city is 2% of that 7.8. With this new special district that is making developers more wealthier, more richer, instead of paying for the infrastructure on their own dime because people didn't build your infrastructure at your homes, didn't put in your concrete driveways and your decks and all your fixtures. And so I don't think it's, I think it's very unfair to somebody that's making a profit to charge a 1% for a special district. So I will not be buying coffee at this location. And I ask my fellow citizens to boycott this location because it's on an unfair playing field with our other business districts throughout our city. Thank you.
Jennifer Dowling.
Sorry, I didn't know I'd have three minutes, I'm southern, we talk a lot. Okay, so the Scooters, drive-through establishments typically make money on the volume of the customers that they can serve. And so while our neighborhood would welcome a nice sit-down coffee shop, the neighborhood cannot handle that kind of traffic coming in and out of that roundabout during peak driving times. I'll also ask you to look at that map and if you'll notice on Belford Way and Dalryada Boulevard, that is our children's bus stops. The bus does not come to our homes, they come right through there. And the Dalryada Boulevard is also a cut-through for every wackadoodle soccer and dad mom coming out on a SUV on their cell phones going mock 10 because they don't want to wait at the red light, so they cut through our neighborhood to get to the soccer fields. So now you're going to add a coffee shop to that, you're going to add a Dobbs Tire store to that. My kids are older, I have a 15-year-old child, my autistic child is 12. I work, my kids have to ride the bus, me, we're double income people. So my kids have to ride that bus in the afternoon and they have to walk from Belford, Belford Way and Dalryada down to our home. I don't, I mean, I don't have family here, I don't have grandma to come pick my kids up. So, I mean, the traffic highly concerns me. Also, I'd like to talk about overdevelopment, you know, be realistic, the land that's being the zone, I, I get developers need to make money. My husband's a CFO for private equity firm, I work for investments, I understand the, the need to make money. But there needs to be a balance for the type of growth in this area. The Tire Center and Drive-Thru Coffee Shop, they belong in a commercial business district, not in the middle of our subdivision. If you go up the street to Wing Haven, you see a commercial use building in between the golf course and the homes. It's a salon, it's a doctor's office, it's a vet, it's nothing with neon lights and a drive-through. And those, those homes are not affected by high traffic areas. So I've asked that the, the business. So I've asked that the businesses that are welcome in our neighborhoods, such as the community bank, there's a dental office that's going, those are low-traffic areas, and they're not going to devalue our property. But I'm basically going to have a neon light drive-through and a car shop in front of my house. And do you think it'll make me sell my house? Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we've thought about it, we've already talked to agents. I did not, I paid, I made a million dollars for that Cracker Jack box of a home. It's a lot. These are people's life's investments. And I'm not the only homeowner. My next-door neighbor paid a million dollars, my other neighbor paid 800,000. These are high net worth homes, and we were sold that these were going to be quaint retail clothing stores, they were going to be high-end restaurants, that everything in this neighborhood was going to be high-end. We would have walking to O'Day Park. I mean, we were lied to. That's not y'all's fault. But that's what we bought into, and now we've got McDonald's that have been proposed, drive-throughs for coffee shops. If you want coffee, drive 2.2 miles up the road. There's a Dobbs Tire Center, there's a Seven Brew, there's a Starbucks, and all that's located in a nice commercial business area. So I would just ask y'all to consider your constituents, the people that pay taxes, and we pay a lot of taxes, and we paid big money for these houses. We don't want these commercial businesses, I don't want to look at it in my backyard, and I'm afraid it's going to devalue my property. So, thank you.
All right. The next person to speak on the agenda is Michael Guyer.
Thank you again, commissioners and Mayor Hennessy. I did hear your comments earlier about it's zone this, it's zone that. But I don't doubt that you, as the commission, would not have influence in being able to rezone this area. I have no other comments, except that I don't want it. The neighborhood doesn't want it. It doesn't fit, it's not needed, and it doesn't improve. Thank you for your vote earlier. Thank you for listening to us tonight.
All right. With that, we will close the public comment and allow the petitioner to come forward again. All right. Can you address the concerns of the residents?
I mean, to be honest with you, it's the same as before. It's a commercial piece of property along Highway DD.
Yeah.
I represent Scooters. Scooters is looking to do a location on a commercially-zoned piece of property. Scooters and myself are not involved in whatever someone was sold for their home. I completely get it, I do, but it doesn't, there's nothing that I can do about it here.
Commissioner Howard.
I'm sure. Question from staff. What are the regulations concerning bypass lanes and drive-through?
They are not required unless Planning and Zoning Commission wants to have them add one. So it's at the discretion of the commission.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Boust.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I understand the concerns with the bus stop being right there by where it looks like they're going to have to exit to get back onto DD. Is it because the Missouri State won't allow you to put a right-hand turn getting back onto DD out of coming out of the drive-through? Because you've got a right-in only?
Correct. We have a right-in only off, directly off DD.
So if anybody was going eastbound on DD, they'd have to go back by the bus stop and then circle around to the...
To be honest, I'm not familiar exactly where the bus stops there.
She's saying it's on the backside of where you're putting that new, the new road that we approved earlier. So, I mean, my concern is, do you, have we looked at with the highway department to have a right out, out of that road, or is that completely out of the question, to have a right out onto DD?
Yeah, there's, we tried that in the beginning, and there's no way that Modot's going to allow anything other than that right-in that was previously approved and constructed.
Okay. I was just trying to find a way to help the concerns of the bus stop, and I get probably the soccer moms are 100% what she's saying, or even soccer dads rolling out of there doing what she's saying. So I was just trying to find a way to help it easier on some of the residents. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Lake.
You know, I guess I'm more common than anything, but, you know, I agree with the traffic concerns. There's just way too much going on there. I get it. It's C2. But is the business fit there with all the traffic it's going to bring, right? I really don't think so. So I'm against this.
David, with the conditional use permit, what happens if something comes up? I mean, you know, that it causes a problem for the neighborhood? I mean, what are the repercussions of that?
Like, problem how with...
Well, too much tra, what happens if there, their traffic is, I mean, we've seen it when some, when the Dutch bros came in and it was, traffic was going out onto the highway, people trying to get in there. So I guess what I, my question is, is if it's causing a problem for the residents, how, what alternative do they have? I mean, it's, it would already be there.
Yeah. I mean, in our code, a conditional use permit could be revoked. I mean, if it's a violation of, if they're not following the hours, or, I guess, it'd have to be a violation of some city code. Traffic necessarily is not necessarily a violation of, you know what I mean?
Right.
If it's a busy place, it's a busy place. You know, it's not a violation of a city code. But if it's a violation of a city code, I think it could be something that would be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we could revoke the conditional use permit, but it had to be a violation of some standard.
Right.
And traffic backing up onto a road, I guess, you know, that's, I guess, something we could talk about, but I don't see that as a violation of a city code necessarily.
Yeah, it's something that's not necessarily within their control.
Yeah.
But at this point, this use meets the requirement for the...
Yeah. I mean, it's, like I said, it's a conditional use, so the commission, I mean, if it's, traffic is a reason to deny something, if we're worried about the traffic, the conditional use, that's why this is here. Traffic is a reason we're doing this. Like I said before, like a noise, or, you know, those are, those are issues for a development that, this is an extra layer of that review, and that's why we do these permits. Hey, this is going to be too much traffic. That's a reason to deny it. That's, that's the power of this, this permit and the commission's ability to vote yes or no.
I've been on this commission for almost 30 years, and I can't tell you how many times I've heard people come in here and tell them, tell, we were told that was always going to be a field behind us. We were told that was going to be a park eventually. That's going to happen. That's just, there's nothing we can do about that. And everybody on this commission are volunteers, and, and we are appointed to this position, and we're residents of O'Fallon, so we all understand the concerns of the residents as well. I try to put myself in your place, and, you know, I've been in situations where there's developments that's come around where I live, and I, and I can understand the concerns. But I also want you to understand that, that there's nothing we can do about what somebody else tells you. Anybody could tell you anything, and if you believe it, without getting it thoroughly vetted, there's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah. I'd like to add that where I live, you know, we've got kind of a blind hill on our subdivision. We don't have any growth across the street. It's an open field. At some point, that's going to become something, right? So I really empathize with y'all, because I know you can't see anything coming up that hill, and if you got a coffee shop across the street with traffic coming in, someone's going to get hurt or die. So that would be my concern. That's why I'm not in favor of this.
No, sorry. Excuse me, sir. The public comment is closed. All right. Commissioner Nunnery.
Our city attorney over there, these developments, Scooters in particular, which we're talking about now, meet our city ordinance, is correct? And is it not correct that we are, as a commission, required not to put our personal thoughts into the situation with the statutes?
So this is an administrative action that you're, that you're taking right now, and that is whether to approve the conditional use permit. It's your job to see that it meets the standards. So with the conditional use permit, a condition, it says that a use is appropriate on certain parcels, but it may not be appropriate on all parcels. So that's why you need to go through the standards that are set forth in the ordinance and see if they comply with the standards. One of those standards is traffic. It may not be appropriate on a certain parcel just because of the traffic that's going to be generated, and given the surrounding land uses, or the access, or the, the type of road that is there now. So that's your job. You do have a little bit of discretion with conditional use permits to make sure that they meet the standards in the ordinance. If you find that all of those standards for the conditional use permit are met, then you do need to approve the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
All right. And members of the commission, do we have any other questions or comments regarding this item on the agenda? If not, do we have a motion regarding the conditional use permit for the property at 130 Dalryada Boulevard?
Motion to approve of staff recommendations, nunnery.
Second, Howard.
All right. We have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for the property at 130 Dalriada Boulevard, Three Kings Properties, the contract purchaser, for the proposed use of a drive-through kiosk coffee shop. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right. Motion carries. Now, this will be at the next city council meeting on November 20th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The next item for the site plan is regarding the site plan for 130 Dalryada Boulevard for the drive-through kiosk coffee shop. Members of the commission, do we have a motion regarding this item?
Motion to approve of staff recommendations, nunnery.
Second, Howard.
All right. We have a motion and a second for, to approve the site plan for the property at 130 Dalriada Boulevard, Kings Properties is the contract purchaser for a drive-through kiosk. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda this evening is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for Arrive O'Fallon Apartments, RTA O'Fallon LLC is the property owner, for the proposed use multifamily residential development. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, Mayor, members. My name is Jarrett Cooper. I'm with Roseman &amp; Associates Architects, and I also have with me tonight Michael Travis, is a member of Redtail Development, the developer for the, for the property. April Geisman could not be here tonight, and so we're here to represent the project. You've seen this project several times before. It has not changed significantly since the last time we were here. Basically, what has happened, and we agree completely with staff, by the way, that the few items that were listed on the recommendations, we certainly will do. But what has happened is when we put the plans in for review, the site plan unfortunately timed out before the development could be approved. And so it is currently actively in plan review again, and so we're hoping that we can just get this re-approved tonight so that we can move forward with this development. There were a couple of minor, minor changes to the plan, modest changes, that we went ahead and made since we were coming back to see you again. And those were, those were referenced in the staff report. There's one building that has been rotated slightly on the site plan, and some sidewalks have been adjusted accordingly. And with those changes, Horner &amp; Schifrin has gone through and already made the updates to stormwater and all of the utility modifications that need to be made.
All right. Commissioner Nunnery.
I'm assuming you've got this funded this time?
Yes, sir.
So when would you commence building? Once you received all approvals, when do you think you'll finally do something? Because we've heard it, we've heard it, we're hearing it again. You know, we need to maybe move forward or kill a dead horse.
Right now, sir, we're looking at hopefully by summertime start, depending on everything being approval, and hopefully no later than the fall.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Howard.
The site plan shows a mail kiosk, I presume, outside, but the floor plan shows that there is a mail room with packages and stuff. Since you've been here, the last time we passed new regulations concerning mail kiosks, so are the kiosks going inside the building, or are they going outside the building?
Mail service is in the corner of the community building, and so it is an interior, it's accessed outside, but it is an interior space on that building.
Explain that to me, Alex. Access outside?
It has an outside door going into the corner. There's a secondary entrance into that, that space of the building that is direct access from a sidewalk into the mailroom, but it's part of that larger community building in the center of the site.
So we're showing mail is just indicating an entrance?
That entrance, yes.
The inside mailroom.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mayor.
Gentlemen, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Nunnery. I can tell you what my vote's going to be if you come back for an extension. I can tell you it's going to be a no.
Yes, sir. I understand.
You've been here before, and before, and before, and before, and to me, if you try to come back for another extension on the site plan, I don't know what the rest of this commission's going to say, but I will vote no.
We should. We appreciate your position. Yes, sir.
So this is good for one year?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you'll cut it close if you go till the summer or next fall, because we're only in the beginning of November, so.
David, or Ethan, it's one year after the plans have been reviewed, or what, is it one year from today?
Today. Yeah.
That they need to what?
To get construction plans approved and a building permit issued.
Got that?
Yes, sir.
November of 26.
Hopefully, we'll all be here, right?
I will be.
All right. Do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Motion to approve of staff recommendations, nunnery.
All right.
Second, Howard.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for Arrive O'Fallon Apartments, RTA O'Fallon LLC is the property owner, for the proposed use of multifamily residential development. Members of the commission, cast your votes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Next item on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. On the consent calendar is a water line easement, ARV LLC at 705 Brunges Drive, a utility easement, ARV LLC at 705 Brunges Drive.
Brunges.
Brunges.
You know that.
I always said it that way. So, all right. Do we have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, Charlie Nager.
Second, Heath.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar for this evening's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Members of the commission, cast your votes. All right. The consent calendar has been approved. And at this point, we have city council action updates. David?
Yeah, we had two things go to council from our last meeting. One was the Lee's Chicken on Bryan Road, which was approved. And then we had the, it was the downtown apartment complex, Stevenson Place, that's been tabled at council. And I'm not sure, developers looking at a few things, maybe trying to get a public road back to it to make them four sale units, but nothing's been changed right now, so it's been tabled at council. So we'll see how, what happens with that.
All right. With that, we will adjourn the November 6, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.